Seven o'clock. Rich?
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Pousa.
Aye.
Alderman Duco.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Yeah.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigand.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Corr.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregawitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Interim Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spreerman.
Here.
Chief Clay has had a vacation day today and Assistant Chief Ice Can is here. Uh, I think that's everyone.
Yep.
We got a mall qualifier. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you're able, please stand and join us for the pledge. We have two Boy Scouts here from the King family. Uh, two brothers are working on, the youngest one's working on his citizenship in the community, and they're gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I may have missed saying there from Troop 11 over here at Cathedral, which they come and visit us quite often. Good luck, gentlemen, on your, getting your merit badges completed. At this time, um, let me just make mention, and I already told Anissa, for the staff who are here tomorrow night, it sounds like the weather tomorrow night could be a little dicey coming through the city. So, if we had to leave anytime we're in here for a storm, the police officers at these meetings are present in force, and the fire chief, they would guide us across the lobby to the stairway that goes downstairs to a secure area for a storm shelter. If we had a fire, smoke or a fire, we would ask that you leave calmly going out either the doors in the main lobby, but try to work your way over to the sign at the courthouse so that we can kinda get a count and make sure the people that you came with got out of the building okay. So that's the two, uh, the two approaches we ask if we have to use them ever in case of an emergency. But like I said, they're predicting some pretty severe storms tomorrow evening, so everybody, please take caution wherever you're at. Um, at this time, we have no public hearing this evening. I'll open public participation if anyone would like to address the council this evening. Anyone? Okay? If there's no one that has an item for the evening public participation, I will, excuse me, I will close public participation, and we will go on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. So we've had a host of change this year. Um, and, and I'm, I'm happy for people who are moving on in their lives, or retiring, or starting a new chapter, but kinda sad for the city when we get those employees who are really, really outstanding. Tonight, I'm gonna ask Mr. Rich Peppers to come forward, and, uh, I'm going to recognize Rich. Rich has been with us twelve years, and he has, uh, he has been a part of taking the, the information technology of the city to a new level. And he's not always have, uh, he's had to work with us with budgeting to get it to where it really, he just needs to be. It's, it's one of those things, as you know, it's changing rapidly, and I will tell you this, my, my, uh, the thing about Rich I've always just admired is that he, uh, he, he doesn't get rattled, uh, he, he's always has positive attitude when you figure something out. He's been very good to us for figuring things out in a very, uh, cost-effective way. So his, uh, his experience and his, and his intelligence on the subject has helped us greatly keep costs at a, at a decent level, 'cause he, he knows he didn't want Jamie to deal with it. And, uh, so Rich is gonna be, uh, he's moving with his family. He told us this a year or more ago, so we knew it was coming, kept trying to talk him out of it, but we're happy for the family move. And, uh, tonight, we, we stopped because end of the week is his, Friday's your last official day. And, uh, so this, this plaque is a small token of our appreciation, Rich. You have been a, you have been a team player, you have always been there, kinda that quiet, unsung hero that doesn't ask for a lot of attention, doesn't, doesn't want a lot of recognition, I don't think you probably would like to be up here now. So this is presented to Rich Peppers in grateful appreciation for twelve years of dedicated service to the city of Bevel, while serving as Director of Information Technology, 2007 to 2019, and I sincerely thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm just gonna segue into, just for just a second, on your desk tonight, you see where I put a memo. Uh, we weren't ready by Friday's agenda for different reasons, we didn't have everything, all the i's dotted and all the t's, and I couldn't catch up with Garrett on Friday, and certainly couldn't catch Jenny on Friday, 'cause she's somewhere under a tent at Ardenne Square. Uh, but, uh, so what I did today, I had our, what we believe is gonna be, and we firmly believe he's catching on quick, and he hasn't left yet, but Scott Markovich, would you stand, Scott? Scott is, uh, temporary for two weeks. If we don't scare him, if Rich doesn't scare him before Friday, uh, in two weeks, are the first meeting of June, I'll be back to you recommending Scott to be the new IT director. Uh, we've met several times, Rich has been very, uh, he was at the top of Rich's choice when Sherry and I and Rich interviewed a number of candidates. And, uh, so, uh, he's starting today, he's working with Rich, he's getting quite, well, he was here one day last week, and he's getting quite a crammed course of, uh, of everything that Rich has got his hands into around here in the city. And, uh, but we're very, uh, we're very excited about Scott being a part of, we'll be back with all the, uh, uh, final recommendations for Scott. We looked hard, and, uh, filling Rich's shoes is not easy, so we ask you to all be patient with Scott, don't overwhelm him, uh, he's gonna be at his first staff meeting tomorrow, so he'll meet the staff, the ones he hasn't met, and we'll take this a step at a time, but I think we'll be fine. So Scott, welcome, and, uh, Rich, tell him everything you know. But the good thing is, just typical Rich, what he said to me last week when he was in my office, he said, "Now you know." He said, "All you gotta do is call me." He says, "I'll walk you through anything and everything for as long as you need it." So that's the ton of Rich that we're, um, that we've experienced for all these years, and he just always was there whenever we needed him. So, uh, thank you, Rich, and, uh, thank you, Scott, and we'll, we will turn the chapter, and we wish Rich and his family the best. Um, this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask, uh, in the regular portion of the meeting, if someone's willing to make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of May 6, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims payroll and dispersments, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,403,826.99, and the payroll in the amount of $1,101,854.25. Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pousa, any additions or corrections or comments on the claims and dispersments? Payroll? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurers' report. I'd ask for a motion to receive and file a statement of cash and investment in the treasurer's report from April 2019, both reports. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Dittelman, second by Schaefer, any additions or corrections to the, uh, those two reports? All in favor of the motion signify and by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on to oral reports. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla. I'm sorry. Oh, I slipped up and missed Garrett's report. At this time, is someone willing to make a motion to receive and file the city attorney's report dated May 16, 2019? Mary Steele, second by Barfield. Uh, any additions or corrections to the attorney's report? All in favor of receiving and filing this report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go to Alderman Consilla, Finance Committee.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and purchase budgeted Parks Department truck from Landmark Ford, a state bid vendor, in the amount of $22,157.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pousa, uh, any additions or corrections or comments on this motion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, A2, 11A2.
I make a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and purchase buzz, budgeted street department truck from Cardinal Buick GMC in the amount of $28,827.
Motion from Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on this motion? Why, why are we waiting on this one? Uh, Alderman Consilla.
That's because this is an unusual piece of equipment, and we can get it delivered directly, they have it in stock.
Locally.
Whereas if we went through the state budget, it might be six weeks before we get it.
Six, could be six months.
Yeah.
And we, state bid right now is unpredictable when we get it. The other thing is, we serviced here locally, and we, as you know, we've tried before to even get local people to even, to bid on these. Usually they don't. Uh, this one did, and, and it's within reason, and we felt like it was a, a good move. Does that answer the question there? So we have a motion and a second for the second truck that's in the budget coming from Cardinal Buick. Roll call.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments and encumbrances as recommended by the Finance Director.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pousa, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to the Traffic Committee. Alderman Ovian.
Thank you, Your Honor. 11B motion, 11B1, motion to establish no parking on the west side of North Eighth Street between West Main Street and West Sixth Streets. So, some of the--
Motion by Alderman Ovian, second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear discussion on this motion coming from the Traffic Committee? All in favor of this motion and have the proper ardent draw and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Streets and Grades, Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of the Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve Hank's Excavating and Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $63,575 for the Express Drive Slip Line Culvert Tiff Fund. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear discussion on this motion coming from Streets and Grades? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Motion carries. Communications.
12A, Bevel Museum Day, 6/1, 2019, request from Bevel Historical Society to hold the Bevel Museum Day Saturday, June 1, 2019, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Street closure request for the first hundred, 150 feet of East Garfield Street from Muscota Avenue southwest. Additional requests of trash tilter.
I make a motion.
Make a motion. Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Rothweiler, any addition or corrections on this, uh, comments? All in favor of approving this communication signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just wanna add a little quick blurb. We have approved in the past on that same day is, on that June 1, uh, the St. Clair County Historical Society will be open, uh, our Labor Museum and the Gustav Kerner House. If you've never had a chance, it's, it's really, and to the Boy Scouts as well, those are, we have some, really some very informative museums and, and locations to go visit, and, uh, I know they're, they're presenting, they're presenting something, they asked me to be over to the Labor Museum on that June 1. I have to look at my calendar, but, uh, it is worthwhile to think about going to those, they're, they're really very informative. Moving on, we have no petitions this evening. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read Resolution 3360 by title only. Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Hazel, to read Resolution 3360 by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3360, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Bevel, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2019 and ending on the 30th day of April 2020.
Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 3360? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Ferguson, do I hear any discussion on, on Resolution 3360? Hearing none, roll call.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a, a motion to, uh, to read the ordinances by title only. Uh, let's, you, do them all and read it by title only first, can you do that? Okay. Do I hear a motion to read ordinance 8334, 8335, 8336, 8337, 8338, and 8339, to read them as a group and by title only? Motion by Schaefer, second by Consilla, any discussion on what we're doing? Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, Mayor, the 8335, 36, 37, 38, and, uh--
Yeah.
39, um, I'm wondering why these are on the agenda.
Because our city attorney has advised us, and we're getting smarter over the years, that we really are supposed to have an ordinance, and they were brought forward to be approved as an ordinance, we have to have an ordinance to approve the denial.
It's the way the ordinance is phrased, that it has to be either approved or denied by ordinance.
And, and I'll be honest with you, for some time, years ago, other city attorneys didn't quite, uh, encourage that, so we've been doing it a little bit different, you might notice, we've done it several times, and, and we probably didn't catch that until about--
It's just the way it's written.
It's just the way it's written. So we'll, we'll go through it, but we're asking to prove it as a group and by title only, so we can read that part first. Everybody understand that? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
15A, Ordinance 8334, 2019, and ordinance amending Chapter 76 Parking Schedules of the Revised Ordances of the City of Bevel, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of sections thereof. 15B, Ordinance 8335, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 13, April 19, BART Burke header. 15C, Ordinance 8336, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 14, April 19, BART Burke header. 15D, Ordinance 8337, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 15, April 19, BART Burke header. 15E, Ordinance 8338, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 03, February 19, Gary L. Beckley and Greg Beckley. 15F, Ordinance 8339, 2019, a zoning ordinance in regards to 04, February 19, Gary L. Beckley and Greg Beckley.
Okay. This time, I'm asking for, if there's a motion to approve ordinance 8334. Reference parking, sir, arts by Alderman, motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Steele. We have a motion to approve ar- ordinance 8334 and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
That motion passes. At this time, um, I'd ask for a motion to approve, and we can, if you choose, um, Alderman Pousa talked to me about this, uh, you can make a motion to approve ordinance 8335, 8336, and 8337 as a group, but let me remind you, an aye vote is a denial of the ordinance, the way it's written in our packet. Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
So, Arden, Ms., Mrs. Pousa, are you willing to make--
Yes.
--make a motion?
An aye vote is--
To approve, you proved, motion is to approve 8334, 35, and 36. Second by Alderman Duco. I'm sorry.
It's only 80, 8335, 36, and 37.
I'm sorry, 8335, 8336, and 8337. I might've looked down on my bifocals there.
There you go.
Uh, we got that correct, and we have a, a motion and a second. An aye vote, if you read the body of it, is a denial. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Duco. Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was a little bit unique to navigate, but we made it. Okay, at this time we go to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business right now? Yes, Alderman Wigginton.
Mayor, would you allow me to make a few remarks before the council?
Well, I think you're going to.
I got the floor.
You got the floor.
What I'd like to say before the council is, this is my own personal opinion, but we all know there's a protocol in this city, how we solve problems and take care of problems. The mayor's door is always open, constantly, can come to committee, or talk to your fellow Alderman about it. There's been two instances lately where there are things that were posted on Facebook that I think caused a lot of consternation. And, you know, there's a right way and a wrong way to do things. You know, Facebook can be your best friend or your worst enemy, and it can be misconstrued in many, many instances. This is my own personal opinion, but, you know, I was involved with Lindenwood for fourteen years from day one on their Capitol Campaign Committee. I know a lot that's going on in that university. I've been talking to the mayor a lot about this, and a lot of articles have come out lately, and I think Jerry Blattick, who was the first president there, stated things very well. I'm gonna tell you one thing, that campus has been solid since day one. They've made money. Their admission might be down a little bit, but because they're choosing to select better students. They're not just taking anybody anymore. For you that don't know it, most of the board members, and maybe all of the board members in St. Charles, have never foot, set foot on the Bellevue campus. We have become a stepchild. The city has been a great partner with Lindenwood University. And for, to say that the city is not aware of what's going on, we all have heard the rumors, we all knew that there was possibility that they would, might leave, but I can guarantee you, Alderman Pusa and I sat in with the mayor on a couple of meetings with Dr. Shonrock. We had him working with Dr. Dozier, two oh one, on projects. We were helping him to teach him how to market to Southern Illinois, which, believe it or not, they still hadn't gone onto that. Dr. Shonrock promised that they were still gonna stay in this city and keep going as they were going. About a month ago, the mayor met with the interim president, R. Johnson, got the same information, that we're here to stay. So, it was a shock, maybe it wasn't a total surprise, but they're gonna be day classes for another year, and then whatever they're talking about night, graduate courses, but they gotta be here to 2023. The way I look at this is, it's not a negative, it's a positive. Whether we can keep Lindenwood here or not, at this stage of the game, I'm really not sure, because they have a board of directors that's disconnected to this campus. This campus is pristine, it's in moving condition. I can guarantee you, I've had a lot of conversations with the mayor and other people. There's gonna be, the city's gonna be moving forward very aggressively, and we don't have to solve this problem overnight. We want the best-case scenario to happen. And what I'm saying is, this is not a negative, this, we gotta turn this into a positive. But we all have to be on the same page, we all have to work together. We cannot be running off on tangents if we're not totally informed on what's going on. We had a problem, and I'll just let you know, it's not uncommon, one of the Facebook posts was about sixty-four oh one, Adam Hills Project, there were some problems there. It was an ongoing problem, Alderman Ovian was very much involved in this. We got together last week, had a great meeting with the owner of that center, with the mayor and other city officials. There was a negative Facebook, Facebook post that came out about that. After we got together, the problems were solved. The owner of the center was happy, they're moving forward. Well, then another Facebook post went up saying that the mayor and the city really got behind him, and which they did. But it was precipitated by the inaccurate first Facebook post, and that's what set this thing on fire. And maybe you can look at it one of two ways. Yeah, we got the problem solved. We all came to the table, we sat down, we talked about it, we worked it out. Same thing's gonna happen to Lindenwood University. We're gonna sit down with a lot of people, we're gonna talk to a lot of people, and we're gonna work this thing out. But for anybody to walk out of this council chambers and say the city was unaware of this or is behind the curve is completely false. The city is up to date, the mayor has had countless mayor meetings with Lindenwood officials. Besides the fact that none of the board members have ever been over to this campus, they had sixty properties over there, like we have fifty properties over here. They sold all sixty properties over there to one buyer. You know why? Because they are in dire financial straits. It's not uncommon, and Dr. Blattick pretty much said it in his interview, that this campus over here was strong, it was producing, and they were sucking money, basically, out of this campus to keep St. Charles afloat. What a sad scenario that is. How does City Hall fight that? You can't fight that. You know, this is a private university. They could pretty much do what they wanna do, but we, but through all of this, we were still a good partner. We still listened, we sat down at the table, we worked with them, we did everything we could. Alderman Pusa turned herself inside and out for that university, entertained the new kids and so on and so forth. And this mayor has behind, been behind this campus from day one. So to walk out of here and say boo, oh, poor us, poor us, you know what? It ain't poor us. You know, if they don't wanna be here, then we want somebody that's gonna be a lot better. Because somebody can walk into this campus and take this thing over in a heartbeat and not have to put two cents worth of improvements in it. So, just be careful what you say, where you say it, and how you say it, and if you do say it, make sure you're totally informed, because this is the kind of stuff that sparks rumors, backfires, and puts this whole council in a very precarious position. These are my feelings, you can take it out of here, whatever you want, but I've thought, put a lot of thought into this, and I've asked the mayor if I could make this statement before the council, which I appreciate it. So, thank you so much for listening, I appreciate that.
Alderman Barfield.
Mr. Mayor, since Alderman Wigginton touched about Lindenwood, are we gonna form a committee for something to ensure that Lindenwood stays in the City of Bellevue?
We're, we're, we're gonna be meeting, I got several people I'm meeting with this week, started today with phone calls, we're gonna form a committee. Garrett and I are talking about how to proceed. Garrett is, as stated in the newspaper article, I think it was online today, I've asked him to review, you know, all the terms and the agreements that we have in place to make sure that what they've done so far is all, you know, been followed, so he's looking at that. I can't tell you, you know, I don't have names yet, but we're waiting to hear. We've had some interesting, we've had some interesting contacts, people calling in the last few days that wanna share information, so I think we're at the point right now, we're gathering information and we're listening. But we will be, we will be sitting down with a number of partners, and, you know, I've been in touch, Dr. Dozier has called me, 'cause he was one of the people I had met with several times when we had some, when they were starting to change presidents so often, you know, they put our president on leave, and then the next one, there was a few of us had met several times then. And so, we're hearing from a number of people, we're gonna go slow, we're gonna listen, and we're gonna be ready to work with them. We've made it clear to them that we wanna be a part of any decisions that are being made, and we definitely, and I think they're realizing now that, that they don't wanna, they don't wanna ruin their whole reputation. I, I think, you know, hindsight, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I think they would agree that the way this came out might not have been the best approach.
Are they willing to sit down at the table and talk for it?
Well, I can't honestly say that this interim president is willing. He's, he's been unique. But they're announced, they're saying that they're gonna have a new systems president in a very short period of time, he's predicted to us. So, if the St. Charles, the system, overall system, gets a new president, my, my response would be that we immediately ask to sit down. Plus, I've been in touch with the chairman of the board of directors, and I've asked him, now, he's put pretty much all of his stock in this board member who became the interim president. I have to believe they're pretty good friends, and he's kinda turned everything to Mr. Johnson. But I've let Dr. Coniere, who's the president of the board, I've let him know that we would like to sit down with the new president and whoever as quickly as possible to start, you know, getting the message under control and getting the facts. So, we're, we're gonna be doing that real quickly, and I'm, I'm not sure, meeting with, with, with way, the way Mr. Johnson approached the city, I'm not sure, I think he's, he's already made it clear, he's exiting real soon, so I think we need to get that next new person.
Go ahead, Roger. Go ahead.
On this committee, when you form a committee, you'll have several Aldermen on the committee, correct?
We're gonna, I'm gonna talk it over with Garrett. If we, you know, if we have more than four of us, we have a quorum of a quorum, so every meeting then becomes a public meeting, we can't, I think we gotta talk about a balance of, so, and I wanna talk to them. I wanna be fair, so that, you know, I think sometimes we have to have a few meetings that we can sit down and, and, and have a discussion, then come back to the full body with some updates. But I, I don't, I don't have a preconceived notion yet of how this is gonna play out. Hopefully, I can report back to you in the next week or so, and we'll have a recommendation how I'd like to start structure this. Thank you.
Sixteen heads are better than one, and the mayor's door is always open, and, you know, if somebody's got an idea, or somebody they think, you know, the city should talk to, don't keep it to yourself, don't keep it as a secret. You know, come forward, and, 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 Mayor, I think, again, you sent out an email the other day to all the Aldermen, I think through the process, I think the council needs to be informed pretty much on a consistent basis on, on the progress, where we're going, how we're gonna get there, because I think all sixteen members of this council need to be up to, up to date, up to speed on what's...
No, I don't disagree with you. I, I will say, not because he's present, but I will say that in reviewing the online article today that Mike Cozettek did, I think it's pretty factual. Questions were raised about different things. Jamie and I met with them last Thursday or Friday, so if you don't have the article that's online, if you like, just contact, we can share it with you tomorrow. I didn't make copies tonight, I just didn't do that. But, you know, I think what you gotta do is you gotta gather everything, look at everything, and then we'll keep you informed. I don't wanna spread rumors, I don't wanna sped, I don't wanna spread until we have facts, but at this point in time, you know basically everything I know, other than the fact that, I do know, I'm, the mayor's office is getting a lot of phone calls from people wanting to talk to me, and has different bits of information that we're gathering, and we're gonna, we're gonna put together. It might be a couple of different meetings. It might be a couple of different groups that we meet with have different approaches to this. So, we will, we will keep you informed. As my email said, you know, this week, or was it today or Friday, I forget, I think it was Friday, it actually went out, that we're gonna keep you in touch, and I'm sincere that, you know, we're gonna take, the one thing I said to NPR when they interviewed me the other day, and I said to Mike as well, you know, when, when I was Alderman of Ward Five, Bellevue West High School at that time, Ward Five encompassed all the way to Thirty-Fifth Street, on South Thirty-Fifth Street. So that was my ward. And, and when that happened, when the high school announced they were leaving, I was very concerned, because the campus was pretty run down then. And, and the houses, the church across the street, and a lot of the neighborhood was pretty worn, pretty tired. But think about it, folks, the campus today, I'm not saying it doesn't have any repairs, 'cause it's still old buildings, but that campus, and they admitted to me, at Mr. Johnson, that the university has spent a minimum of forty-two million on that campus, is what he told me, and Anissa was in the room, Anissa, when he, when he told Anissa and I, I had her in the meeting when they came over last Monday. So, and you were present, I think, with me a couple of times when they were, when they came over, I had Jenny present, so that we had somebody there. The campus is in much better shape, and the neighborhood, the old church, if some of you remember, it was deplorable, and some of the housing next to it was in very sad shape. So that, you know, the good news is, we're not starting at that same level of, of housing concerns and campus concerns that we were in two thousand and two. But we still have a major concern here, and that's to find the right way to repurpose this. But it is, as Roger said, it's their campus, so we have to be a good partner, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be that, 'cause we want what's best for Bellevue. And, and so if we just all work together, stay patient, and not throw too many stones too quick, I think we're gonna find, we can, we can work through this. So, I hope that answers most of your questions tonight, but as Roger said, I mean it sincerely. All you gotta do is call. It was a very, I will say this, and I've been here quite a while, this past week was a very challenging week, and, and we navigated through it, and we'll be fine, but we just gotta keep going, and we gotta, and we gotta, we gotta just find the people who are sincere about wanting to help and what they can offer, and we'll figure this out. Okay. Any other questions about that? We're gonna go to miscellaneous and new business. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm not sure if this is, I, I thought under miscellaneous, and I probably won't speak as long as Roger or as eloquently, but I wanted to thank, as being a chairman, or co-chairman of a committee since two thousand, the year two thousand, I wanted to thank everybody for volunteering for Art on the Square. It wouldn't be possible without the city. This year I chaired the volunteers, and we had close to six hundred, and also the city workers who come and are not paid on Saturday and Sunday, also the chief of police here, assistant chief. My granddaughter kept dialing his number, 'cause I had to call him for an incident on Friday, and she was playing Watch andaw, Dog's Journey or something, and she kept hitting that number, so anyway, I already apologized, but...
That's okay, they think I do that, too.
Yeah. And I was at that first meeting in January of two thousand as a young forty-something. It was the Steels', her best friend Barb Kern, Shirley Callison, the Weidmans', the Marshes'. So anyway, that's how I got involved from back then. But the other thing I wanted to say is, to compliment the city, we had so many compliments all weekend, and the volunteer of the year was our city clerk, Jennifer Gainmire. Our city treasurer also worked there.
You stole my horse's feet.
And I don't know if it's my place, 'cause I'm not Patty Gregory, but I have been involved since the beginning, so I just wanted to say a thank you.
You know, I think everybody knows, Art on the Square is, is, but, you know, the refreshing thing, as tired as Jenny worked extremely hard, and, and I told her, when she gets to be twenty years older like me, her legs and back will, she won't be doing this. But she ran, and she told, she admitted to me, her feet were hurting, and, and she was worn out both Saturday night and, Friday night and Saturday night, and Sunday night she was, I think she told me at one point, I think I'm dead.
Thank God for Jason and Johnny.
Well, and that's, we, that's, I just wanna reiterate.
They were wonderful.
We've got, we've got city staff and friends who go above and beyond the call of duty. And I drove back down here Sunday night just to check on them, but I stayed out of the way, because until I can get this back fixed, I'm worthless when it comes to lifting and walking very far, and, and I, I just stood back from a different perspective this year, a little bit, last couple of years, and watched them, and it's amazing how well our people all work together. The one thing I wanna close with these comments about Art on the Square is, this year was, was no different than any other year. The privilege I have serving as mayor, I, I talk to these artists, and every one of them will tell me, no place in the country are they treated better. And that's a compliment to our city, our volunteers, our staff, and they, they said it repeatedly, I know Jenny heard it as well, they, they, they just are very complimentary of the way this thing is so well polished. So I thank all of you, it was a complete success. It's challenging, it's, it's hard on everybody, both physically and mentally, and, but it was a success thanks to so many, so to all of you, thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
And if you didn't get the opportunity to volunteer, I'm gonna tell you, I went, I showed up at six o'clock on Saturday morning to help set up. The things that they do behind the scenes, that you have no idea that go on, just changing over chairs from black to white, it's incredible how seamless it all went. It was just, it, it's really cool, so if you get the chance to do it, it's a lot of, it is fun to see it happen.
A lot of attention to detail.
Yes, yeah.
And, and, like I said, we're, we are, we are said to be like no other, far as the attention to detail, the, the spirit of volunteerism and service to the artists and, and people there. So, again, thank you to all of us, to all of you, it was, it was a tribute to the entire, and we have volunteers that don't all live in the city, by all means, they come from all over, and they wanna be a part of this, of this phenomenal event, so we got a lot of people to thank, so thank you. At this time, I'd like to go and move on to motor fuel claims, if someone's willing to make a motion and approve the motor fuel claims that's in front of us for twenty thousand dollars, six hundred and four, twenty thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and no cents. Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Cincilla. Any discussion on the motor fuel claims? Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you should have received from Jenny today in your drop box by email, I'm sorry, by email, a proposed contract that we talked about in executive session. We're not ready to vote on it tonight. This will be brought back up at the council meeting, the first council meeting of June. So, you know, you can contact me or Garrett, city attorney Harner, this week, or we got two weeks, if you have specific questions. But this is everything that Garrett laid out to you about this particular situation that's in front of us. We'll vote on it, I think it's June third, the meeting, Jenny? If you have questions, please contact us ahead of time, so we can hopefully get you the answers and put any mysteries or fallacies to rest. But unless, you know, unless somebody has something that, you know, at this point, there's really no need to go into executive session for this, because, like I said, we won't be taking a vote tonight, and we got plenty of time for two weeks to still, but it's, it's identical, what's in writing is identical to what you presented them in executive session last time we met, or, I think it was last time we met, maybe it was two ti, two times ago. So, any other questions about that? The last announcement I wanna make is, we're closed Monday, the main offices are all closed. Of course, certain departments have to remain on duty, but, but we have the parade, Monday the twenty-seventh of May, ten AM, but this time for the very first year, it starts on the, the same as the Saint Patrick's Day, North Third and West B, right there in the parking lot starts. Now, this is the first year, because there's so many, the veterans groups have diminished in size, they were ready to cancel the parade, so we spoke up a year ago, a few of us, and said, and you remember, we approved this, that we would take over the parade. The veterans groups are still doing the ceremony out at Walnut Hill, they're still providing the speaker, they're still getting the parade marshal and the color guard, they're still doing all those things. But Jenny has taken on a lot of this with staff in organizing the parade. We will walk in the parade, we traditionally do not throw any candy in this parade, it's a little bit more solemn. I would ask that as many of you that can come, show up, twenty, thirty minutes ahead of time at the North Third and West B at the parking lot. I am gonna have a vehicle or two, try to be available for some of us like myself, until I fix this sciatic nerve, I can't walk that distance. I used to walk there, and then I'd walk back and didn't think anything of it. But, so if somebody wants to be in it and needs a ride, please let my office know, make sure we have enough, enough seats, some, some vehicle or two, but we're still looking, how many, how many do we have so far in the parade?
I have around twenty-eight entries.
Units? Twenty-eight entries, which is kinda low, so if somebody notices something, not really?
No, they usually have around thirty-two.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought they told me up to forty, but that's maybe the better year.
It just depends on the year.
Yeah, depends on the year. So, that's the information about the parade, please try to be there if you can, spread